I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Carrangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lax.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Elkhorn Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of them to attend the meetings of public bodies. In accordance with provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided through the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped, and individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. We're going to start off with the superintendent's report. Dr. Valeski?
Thank you, President Becker. Good evening, everyone. On Thursday, October 28th, 48 students were newly inducted into the Tri-M Music Honor Society. The event was led by Tri-M advisor Zachary Gates, as well as the Tri-M Executive Board, who were successful in organizing a special evening of live music prior to the induction ceremony. Twenty students beautifully sang and played their instruments in group and solo performances. It was a wonderful evening to celebrate our students' musical excellence. This has been an outstanding fall for Bears Athletics. Gymnastics is the overall state champion. Senior Karina Munoz is the overall individual state champion for gymnastics. Girls volleyball in gymnastics are both sectional state champions. Girls tennis, girls volleyball, girls soccer, field hockey in gymnastics. So you've seen the theme here?
Yes.
Won both the GMC Tournament and Red Division. Senior Zane Sorwardy continues to have an incredible season for cross-country. He will be competing in the meet of champions this weekend in Homedale. And football qualified for the state playoffs for the first time in 10 years. They have been our road warriors because they overcame the obstacle of being without their home field this entire season. So congratulations to all of our athletes for all their tenacity. Go Bears! On Wednesday, November 10th, five student athletes signed letters of commitment to play in their sport at the collegiate level, and we wish them well as they continue their academic and athletic careers. You also see a theme there, too. Congratulations, ladies. The East Brunswick High School Drama Club is proud to present Shakespeare's "As You Like It" and excited to add their own spin to it, inspired by steampunk anime. The production will run Friday, November 19th, and Saturday, November 20th at 7:00 p.m. and Sunday, November 21st at 3:00 p.m. And once again, tickets can be purchased at ebhsdrama.org. I would like to remind everyone that Wednesday, November 24th, is a single-session day. Lunch will be served for students in grades K through 7. Schools will be closed on Thursday, November 25th, and Friday, November 26th in celebration of Thanksgiving. First-quarter report cards can be viewed online through Parent Access on Tuesday, November 30th. Hard copies will be made available at the request of anyone without Internet access. I would like to wish everyone a happy holiday and a joyous Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. Will we be honoring our state champions?
We will.
With a resolution?
We will.
Okay, I think we should just name a building after them, or your office.
My office is available, by the way.
Okay.
You can name it for anybody you want.
Okay. We have a proclamation tonight?
We do.
Yes, we do. Dr. Valeski, would you join me?
I will.
Thank you.
After you, ma'am.
Your call.
I'm sorry, I'm a little slow.
Okay. This is a resolution of proclamation for American Education Week. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality; and whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future; and whereas public education employees, be they administrators, teachers, health and student service workers, librarians, custodians, bus drivers, clerical workers, food service professionals, skilled trade workers, security guards, technical employees or substitutes, work tirelessly to serve our children in communities with care and professionalism; and whereas public schools encourage community by bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials for a common purpose. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education proclaims November 15th through 19th, 2021, as American Education Week. Can I please have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Laurie.
Second.
Second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? Well, I would like to echo what is said here. It really is, it's not the old "it takes a village." It takes a community to create a community, and that's what we have. There are stakeholders. There are people who are involved at every level and every aspect of our district to ensure that our children have the future they need to and the future they deserve to. So the Board of Education will never be able to express its appreciation to everyone, from the top right down, everyone, for coming together as a community for our students. And I believe accepting this award is...
Dr. Dana Zambicki.
Dr. Dana Zambicki, President of the Board.
Perfect person to accept.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's been a tough year, and everybody's doing a great job.
Oh, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. Okay, and now, drumroll, please. We have a very exciting presentation. Dr. Valeski, could you, Joyce, could you please tell us what we are about to say?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Accompanied this evening by Mr. Gugliotta, our math supervisor. And we're happy to be here this evening to discuss a proposal that was put forth to the Curriculum Committee at its October 20th meeting. And happy to say the proposal received unanimous consensus by the committee to be put forth for full board review. And so we're here this evening to share this proposal with you. In 2003, the East Brunswick Public Schools adopted the Everyday Math Program, which was cutting-edge at that time. A lot has changed in how we approach mathematics education in the last 18 years. Our district has evolved, and Everyday Math has not evolved to meet the needs of our district. We're currently using various ancillary resources, as you see on the screen here, to supplement the math program. And we believe it is time for a comprehensive program that will align our mathematics instruction in grades K through 6. This process began in 2018-2019 school year. These are some of the programs that were evaluated. There was a committee involved in this work of various stakeholders, administrators, teachers, math specialists. And that committee conducted both site visits and had presentations made by the vendors. The overwhelming choice of that group of stakeholders was the Envision Mathematics Program. And Mr. Gugliotta is going to share with us some highlights of the Envision Math Program.
Thank you, Dr. Bowley. I'm very excited to be here tonight to discuss this new program with you. We had some great conversation during the curriculum committee meeting. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the district and our math program to move forward. I'm excited to share this with you. I wish I had two hours so I could show you all the different components, but we will try to make a more concise version of that. So during the presentations and site visits, we were consistently impressed with the level of technology and how every aspect of the program in Envision is intertwined and interwoven. And that's the most important thing. Those themes that we have listed up there on that slide will come up again and again as we present the great parts of Envision. So right now, our program, as Dr. Bowley shared, we use many different components to supplement Everyday Math and do what we want it to do. And what do we want it to do? We want it to meet the needs of all learners. That's what Dr. Bowley has charged us with. That's what the district's motto and goal is, and that's what we want to try to do. Unfortunately, at this time, Everyday Math does not allow us to do that as a standalone product. So we have to supplement it. We supplement it with various components that help us gather student data and help us inform our instruction. But that, of course, it's more expensive, and it's also, it's not very economical in the sense that we have to go through two different, like a third-party application, and the parts don't talk to the whole. What's great about Envision is that everything talks to every other part of it, and everything is interrelated, which is a very big piece for us. So tonight, I'm going to share some of the amazing resources with you. So I want to start with the reading, that all green rating that we see from Ed Reports. So Ed Reports is funded by groups such as the Gates Foundation. It includes highly-trained educators that are schooled in the math standards as well as the practice standards. It does an independent review, and then it makes suggestions to districts about programs that have a high impact on the district. So as you can see, that in all three of the gateways, focus on coherence, rigor in mathematical practices, and usability, that Envision received green ratings, which means it met expectations in all three areas. And this is very rare for the organization to give green ratings in all three of these areas. So just very, very briefly, the first gateway shows that the current grade-level standards are linked to previous grade-level standards and future grade-level standards. And the program is very cohesive from K, and this act program actually goes through grade 12. The second one, talking about rigor in mathematical practices, links fluency and conceptual understanding. So I always like to say when I talk to people, it's like linking arithmetic and mathematics. When people say "do the math," they're really doing the arithmetic. There's a difference between arithmetic, which is fluency, and mathematics, which is problem-solving and understanding. And the last piece, the usability, is really one of the primary highlights of the Envision Program, and it talks about how the lessons are structured and all the amazing resources that comes with it. So as part of our survey, we checked around, and we asked the vendor also what neighboring districts are using Envision. You can see there are 63 different districts that are using, at different grade levels, are using Envision. And that's very, very important to see, but at the same time, when I contacted a lot of these districts today and even in the past when we first started doing our study, many of them said, "We're using Envision, but, you know, we also like to do this, or we also like to do that, or we also like to do this." And I asked myself, "Why? Why would you want to do that when you have a program that gives you everything, basically, from soup to nuts in the program?" And that's our commitment. Even when we have Everyday Math, we really want to implement the program with fidelity and as designed. And I think that's really, really important because we're not going to know if the program is working correctly unless we implement it the way it was designed to be implemented. So there's, again, there's a tremendous number of highlights in the Envision Program. Here are some of the print resources, and I know some of them might be hard to read, so I just want to highlight. And what's great about the Envision Program, the print resources and the digital resources are intertwined. They have both of them together. For print resources, there's a wealth of support for English-language learners, for special education students, for basic skill students, while at the same time providing enrichment, so we have support and enrichment all in the same program. There's an additional practice worksheet, workbook, excuse me, which offers two pages of additional practice for every lesson. And I want to highlight that because when we previously did a presentation for the Board, this was one of the concerns that was brought forward, that Everyday Math does not have enough practice problems for the kids. And this is, while it might be an old-school practice, it's something that's really, really needed for some students, that they need to have extra practice. A lot of our teachers have to go to outside resources to find that extra practice for their students or make them up themselves, where it's built naturally into the Envision Program. There's differentiated center kits that are available for the teachers, which, again, points to meeting the needs of all learners. There's a math diagnostic and intervention system, which is linked to our response intervention, to help us meet the needs of learners that perhaps are below grade level and need to build in some foundational gaps. And of course, as I mentioned, there's enrichment through daily practice. So again, it spans the scope from support through enrichment. At the same time, married with that are the digital resources. And repeating everything I just said from the print point of view, there's also three-act math experiences, or three-act math activities. And I don't know if you are familiar with those, but those are specifically set up to give a low barrier of entry, so students will be able to approach a math problem and ask questions about it, and it really promotes problem-solving. And there's a lot of different pieces of a three-act, and it might be something as simple, like how many post-it notes does it take to cover the podium? And they'll start with giving, they'll start with doing a small area, and the kids have to start asking questions to figure out how many are going to need to cover the whole surface. Or it might say in one day, it might figure out that I'm 5 foot 10. I think I'm about 5 foot 10. And then the next day, using a... Dr. Gugliotta, will you stand up for a second?
I'm not 5 foot 10.
You might say, "If Mr. Gugliotta is 5 foot 10, how tall is Dr. Bowley?" And the students have to use what they learned the previous day, ask questions to their teachers, and work with their team to try to ascertain how tall Dr. Bowley's going to be. There's also standardized test practice embedded within the program. And what's cool about the standardized test practice, it's not just problems, it's technology-rich problems. So it's problems that model what the students will see on the New Jersey SLA. So there's drop-down menus, there's drag-and-drops, there's, you know, here's five numbers, put them in the correct order. All the things that the kids would see, it's naturally embedded into the program, which is really, really powerful. It's not just giving them a question, it's giving them a question as they would see it on a standardized test. For middle-school math, which the Envision Program really starts with grade 6, there's STEM projects that are available for the kids and student-chosen projects, which really are very much like what Dr. Morant did with his Passion Projects. There's online assessments that are naturally integrated to the program, along with the print assessments. And there's online math games, and we love our math games in our Everyday Math Program. It's a really, really important piece of elementary learning. So these are still embedded into the Envision Program through their online platform. So at the center of all this is Realize, and Realize is the platform that allows everything within the Envision Program to talk to one another. So it's where the students will log into and do their online assessments and answer their questions and get their assignments from their teachers. It's what the teachers will log into to see their classes, to see how the kids are doing. It's what the administrators will log into to see how a school is doing. So everything goes through that one platform, and what's nice is it starts on grade K and goes all the way through the system. There's one platform that's used that coordinates all the resources of Envision. The other big, the other nice piece is that Envision directly links by the right-hand side there to Google Classroom. Now, Google Classroom is used in our elementary buildings and also going to be used in commercial next year. So this is a natural piece because that, hopefully, our program will be used in those two, in the elementary and at the upper elementary level. And it naturally links to it. Two other pieces that I wanted to highlight for you. The one on the left, Success Maker, is an online component that marries itself along with and supplements the Envision Program, and what this allows for more differentiated instruction. So once again, for students that need support, it provides support. For students that need enrichment, it provides enrichment. And it could be part of a station within one of the rotations that we have in an elementary or an upper elementary classroom. It could be given for homework, it could be given as a journal, it could be given as an exit. But it's something that happens on almost a weekly basis, and it keeps the data current. And that's a really important part. The data, again, the kids take it, and Success Maker is a component of Envision, so whatever the kids do on Success Maker directly feeds into Envision, and suggestions are given for support where needed in Envision. The second, on the right-hand side, there's a math screener and diagnostic assessment side, and this is something we've been asking for a long time in math, trying to look for the right product, that gives us a universal screener and allows us to, again, link to our response to interventions and find areas that students need support in, what support could be given. And again, this also is linked to the Envision Program. So unlike what we're going through now with Everyday Math, where we have different components that give us data, the data that we get is not linked to Everyday Math. So the teachers have to take the time to link what they're finding from one component or one program to the Everyday Math Program. Where here, everything is intertwined, and everything is the one-stop shop and that talks to one another. These next two slides, we're very excited about. If that wasn't exciting enough, this one here is our school home support. So once, if a student, if our students are taking online tests, the parents at home can get immediate feedback from how the students have done. If, and in addition to that, there's also tutorial videos that are available through the program that directly links to, and there's like a code in the textbook that if students have any trouble at home or a parent is trying to help their student, they can just scan the code, and this video will pop up to give them some assistance, which we think is amazing, right? That's something that our parents have been asking for a long time with Everyday Math. I think this would be a great, great piece for them. And the second part, which is really, really neat also, is support for our teachers. So we'll eventually get to this, but as you can see, at all the different components, there's going to be a lot of training on our part as we move forward to get our teachers online. So embedded within the Envision Program is 24/7 support, where a teacher that is teaching a new topic, let's say a teacher has switched from third grade to fifth grade, or fifth grade to second grade, or is just new to the district, or is brand-new to teaching, there's actually an instructional video that they can watch on the next day's lesson or the next week's lesson, so they can get an idea of how to present and what resources are available to them. There's print resources available for the teachers. There's PD videos available for the teachers. There's all of these great components that will help the teachers as we go through the program, especially our first year through. It's going to be, there's always going to be a learning curve there, but this will help them with that. The next piece here are the reports. So with all of this data that is flowing in and out from the students, it's very important that we learn, as a district, how to read that data and use it to help inform our instruction. So on the left is the reports that teachers will get. So teachers will naturally get reports about their class, an administrator, so a building principal, a district supervisor, an instructional coach, or anybody that is available can get this data and use it to look at a class, look at a grade level across the building, or look at a grade level across the district. And that's very, very powerful because, again, everything is going through that same platform, and everybody is able to access the platform and read the data and use it. Yes, I think Dr. Bowley. Just in closing, I apologize for going so quickly through all the different pieces. There's really a tremendous amount within this program. I'm very excited, and I think the teachers and the specialists that have seen the presentations were similarly excited. I can't wait, you know, we have great kids in this district, we have great teachers, and we add this great product to it. It's going to just open up a new frontier for us in mathematics, so we're very excited about it. Thank you.
Okay, so pending Board approval, our next steps would include comprehensive professional development and support beginning this spring for our teachers in K to 6, working with our IT department regarding implementation and onboarding of student, our students, and certainly parent introduction meetings, introductory meetings to acquaint parents with the new mathematics program.
So I'm sure everybody is going to have questions and comments so that nobody has to worry about me seeing their hand. I'm going to suggest we do a round robin. Okay, we'll start over here with Jeff and go right down the line. Everybody, please, one question each round, and then we'll just keep going the way we've done it before. I just want to make sure everybody understands, we are not voting to approve this tonight. We are getting the presentation tonight. You will have the opportunity to ask questions. However, we will be asked to vote to approve this our next board meeting. So I suggest you take advantage of the next two weeks. Call Dr. Valeski. Call Dr. Bowley with other questions and thoughts that come up, or if you need to see other material, because we will be asked to vote on it next meeting. Okay, Jeff, your first question?
Just one topic at a time, you said.
I'm so sorry.
Just one topic at a time, you said, correct? Just one topic at a time, or one question?
No, I just thought we would just, each person would ask a question, we would go around, and then we'll keep going around as we've done previously.
Fair enough, okay. I understand. Just a question, assuming this is a web-based system, not held locally on a server, what accommodations are being made for students who don't have Internet access from their house?
To access the digital resources at home?
Yeah.
I'm not necessarily sure they would need to access every night the digital resources at home, would they?
No.
I mean, they'll have their print materials as well. I mean, we'll make accommodations for students who don't have Internet access at home on a regular basis as we do currently.
We do now. So we do that as online access also that we plan to use. So any student that has, that had an issue accessing Internet, we'll send you a recommendation.
You had just shown the at-home help and all of that. It does seem to be a major component of this program.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Winston, if I could.
So any student that does...
Yeah, I don't know if I... We also have distributed a number of mobile hotspots to students.
Okay.
So they have Internet access.
All right, I appreciate that. That seems like a good, okay, thank you.
Barb? We'll come back, Jeff. You'll get a chance, everyone will get a chance to ask as many questions as they want, but this will be orderly. Barb?
Thank you so much for the presentation. It was a lot of good information. You know, one of the concerns of parents has been problem-solving skills, and it sounds very exciting that there's a lot of more focus on problem-solving. Could you give, you know, you gave the example. Do you feel that this is more of a focus of this program than Everyday Math, that you get it earlier and that it's throughout the grades, the problem-solving skills?
Absolutely, and I think the focus of the program is to do a balance between both sides, between the arithmetic and the mathematics. So, and again, through the lens of differentiation, because we have some students who are ready to problem-solve, but they might be lacking the fluency to be able to problem-solve. So we're always trying to find that balance between it. But with all the different components to this program, I think we'll absolutely be able to address all those concerns.
Thank you.
One at a time, one question at a time.
So my question has to do with the transition. So to move from the Everyday Math Program to this new Envision Program, we have students that are obviously partway, midway through one method of learning. What's our plan to help those students and the teachers transition to the new program without missing a beat?
So that's a wonderful question. I think a similar question came up during our curriculum committee meeting. What's great about whether you're looking at Everyday Math or Envision, everything is standards-based. So what the students are learning are the standards for the particular grade level. The approach might be slightly different between the two, but the most important piece is that the topics and the concepts being covered are going to be consistent by grade level, because that's what the New Jersey standards tell us to do. Now, what's great about Envision is because there's so much data collection and pre-assessing and the...
and the success maker in every piece, the teacher can quickly collect data to see where her students stand with a particular topic. So there might be a topic where the kids transition easily from grade two to grade three when they're doing something and there might be something where we need to do some revisiting. But through that data collection process with Envision, it'll give suggestions and curricular resources and suggestions within Envision so that the student, that the teacher might have to revisit with her students before moving on.
So the system will give suggestions on what the students need reinforcement. Is it a different way of teaching though, right? So I guess it's, it's standards-based, so, so they're going to get help where they need it. But is it a different way of learning math? So is that going to be hard for the students to move to a different way of focus?
I don't think so. I think some of the applications in the middle school level, like for, for fifth and sixth grade, I think are going to be, there's going to be different experiences for the kids that we don't currently have in Everyday Math. So when we first started looking at the math program a few years ago, we were particularly focused on grade six, because grade six was, it was an area of concern for us. And there's so many more components and so many more technology resources for the fifth graders moving into grade six that are going to be, that are going to be new because that group has never seen the Envision approach before. But I think the kids on the younger grades will quickly adapt and go through. And within a year or so, I think we'll be able to transition nicely and segue between the grade levels.
I'd also like to say that I think the additional resources make it, the mathematics more accessible and more engaging. I think the little videos and the three-act and all these different pieces really make it more engaging for the students and more interesting and so on.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just one more thing. I think that's why the professional development is so important. Because as the teachers, this is a natural, districts go through this. So I think that's part of our professional development training that we'll receive from Envision and they'll give us some good ideas too about transition.
Okay. Trying to think, I have many. Um, I'm going to do a comment, if that's okay. So I want to say thank you because I had asked for what other districts were using the program at the curriculum committee, which was a wonderful presentation. I'm only a little bit, I don't want to use the word disappointed because that makes me sound harsh. I was expecting to see some stronger districts on the list. Are these 63 the only ones that you've identified or were you looking?
These are just local districts, that's, that's the.
Okay, that was my only concern, was that I was hoping to see districts that were more closely aligned with, with ours and our standards for academics. So, um, but I, but I appreciate that you're getting that information because that was important to see. So my question, my first question is the student and parent support, which I think is, is big, because for years we've heard from parents, why can't I get the tests back? My kid, I want to be able to study with my kids. So I love the fact that we now have a way to do that. So I'm trying to figure out though, can you give me a little bit more about how we're doing that? So we're, we're still not releasing tests, correct?
No, the tests are released. The, the test, when a student takes the test, it goes home with a form sheet on it and the students and the.
So with this, with this bounce, is it going to be the type of thing where a student takes a test? How soon will they be able to get the feedback on what it is that they did wrong and where they need to improve upon?
So the online assessments, if, if we're using the online assessments, that feedback is instantaneous because it will be graded by the system, by the platform, and then everybody will receive the results. The parents, the, the student, the, the teacher will all receive the results. The, the bounce where they're using the QR code might be something in the student workbook where there is a code in there that a student is doing a problem, they're adding fractions with unlike denominators. I'm, I'm just not getting this, I see a quick video on it and they're going to scan the code. So rather than having to go to Khan Academy or to YouTube to look for it, there's something that's right there that's dedicated to the question that they're working on.
That'll be nice for parents too to have that right away. Thank you.
And Lori, just to your first piece, we did include a couple surrounding comparable districts. I think one was using Everyday Math, one was using Hotch Podge, and one was transitioning to a new program.
Thank you.
Okay, my turn. So you talk about professional development for our staff, which is obvious that we'll have that. So I'm envisioning professional development almost for the parents. You talked about parent introduction meetings, Joyce. Would those be along the lines of like the math nights that we hold at school so that each, we could bring the parents in-person to each elementary school?
Yes.
Could you talk for a minute about your plan for that?
Yeah, I think keeping it in the local elementary schools. I think parent, increasing parent engagement and not only what the product can do and will do for their child, but how they can interact with the product, how they can see the reports and see real-time data on their students' acquisition of grade-level mathematics skills. I think multiple sessions would probably be in order and repeat sessions for those. Maybe even a virtual option for parents who can't get out there live, childcare issues or work schedules.
It's like almost establishing a parent hotline throughout the year so that there'll be that, that constant support? Okay.
And you've done a lot of things too, where the teachers have made multi-story instructional videos. So the teacher can make an instructional video on how to access the resources within the textbook.
Oh, great.
And then just post it to their Google Classroom and then the, the parent can access it to see how to access the resources.
So they'll have the, an in-person introduction and then they'll have instant help as they're going through studying or helping their child with homework.
Any unit preview, a unit preview so what their child will be learning in the next year.
So they'll have access. Terrific. Thank you. Li Wu, question?
Thank you very much for the nice presentation. And we talked about this for almost one hour during the curriculum committee meeting. So I asked so many, many questions, but I have additional one. During the transaction period, what kind of challenge do you anticipate our students and the parents will have? And how can you help them to deal with this challenge?
I mean, I think Li Wu, we'd, we'd like to be as proactive as possible. I think if we do receive approval next meeting from the board, we'd like to start drafting and implementing our plan right away. Get that professional development happening throughout the spring so our teachers are ready in the summer to take home their materials and, and prep for the following school year. Also maybe have the, some of the parent introductory meetings in the springtime. Make sure that our orders are here, everything's distributed, everyone has what they need, they know how to use the product, there's ongoing daily support. I, I, I don't know what specific challenge there would be to implementing this program different than implementing any new curricular program. But I'd like to say that working as a community, we can really be proactive and meet the needs of everyone who's involved in this project.
Yes, for example, Everyday Math has been used for close to 20 years. Some parents says, hey, we like the program, my children like the program, and why should we change? So this kind of, the mentality will be a kind of, a challenge in this process. So I want you guys prepared already, think about already in advance. Thank you.
I feel different on Everyday Math. I'm, I'll be glad to see it go if it does. And I'll tell you why, and that's against my question about Envision. You know, 2003 was a totally different world. 2009, smartphones, everything else. This Everyday Math has been antiquated for over 10 years. Not pointing fingers at anybody, but kind of disappointed that we're, you know, but I'm glad we're finally at this point. Now with that comes my question, what's the sustainability of Envision going into the future? Is this something that somebody developed in 2010? And two years from now, we're going to be feeling growing pains with this? Or is it something that was just developed in 2018, 2019 and it has a bright future? If, if you can answer that.
Well, I know the product keeps reinventing itself and is staying current with the field. I mean, I can't predict what life will be like in 10 years from now. But from what we know about the company and the supports provided, they are staying current and they continue to reinvent themselves to do so. Everyday Math has served us over the past few years. It, it was trying to reinvent itself and keep pace and therefore we were supplementing. You know, this is a big project, big financial commitment as well. Time wasn't always right to undertake that, that investment. But we are here now and we're happy to move forward and we do think this product is the right product to support us in the, into the future years.
All right, thank you. I'm, I'm excited about it. So thank you.
Heather?
Thank you for the presentation and I appreciate the amount of information about the program. It looks robust. It does look robust. And I appreciate the parent modules because I know the number of teachers over the years, I've seen my own children come home with, who have provided instructional videos, links to other instructional videos, videos of solving problems. And I feel that most students at this point turn to YouTube for the secondary reinforcement. So if it's there and it's consistent, that's a really rich resource for them. My question is similar to Lori's concern. I was looking at the list of other schools using the same product. I didn't feel that the schools were comparable to our community's needs or to any of the challenges that we face. I will be very happy to say goodbye to Everyday Math. I will wave. But I was curious what the committee went through or what was the process to get to this? How many programs were looked at? What led us to this program in comparison to others?
That was the, that was the original slide that we showed. We originally looked at four programs. And so the one that we really looked at that kind of bubbled up to the top first was Reveal Math and Envision. And we did a site visit for both, for both products. And during our site visit, we were very, very encouraged with Envision and that was our recommendation we originally put forward for sixth grade. Unfortunately, that did not happen at that time. So we revisited, we revisited the products now with the restructuring happening. And we went back to our original products that we were very pleased with. And Envision came in, when we had seen Envision in 2018, they were just starting their process of sort of moving to this new platform. And now it is very, very polished. Like when their presentation was, it, it, it was amazing. Like the people that were there, we were literally like, wow, wow, wow. It was, it was, it was a tremendous presentation. The resources there just excited all of us because, and I, and I appreciate what you're saying, but I can tell you when I call these districts, very few districts implement a program with fidelity. For whatever reason that is, and I don't understand why, because this is, not only is it a financial commitment, but it's a curricular commitment. And if we say we're going to get this program, we want to get this program and use it because that's the purpose of the program. It doesn't make sense to bring in a program and then use something else because you don't know if your program's working or not. So that, that is kind of the, as I was calling and checking with neighboring districts, very few just say, we use this product. There is sort of a, a hybrid that they use. We in East Brunswick, we use Everyday, we, we try to use Everyday Math with fidelity, but we had to add on to it to meet the needs of all learners. So I feel that this product is, just gives us so much potential. And again, it's the spectrum, it's, it's our kids that need enrichment and it's our kids that need support and it's our kids in the middle. I think there's so many different avenues with digital and print that we can help everybody. It's, it's going to really open up, just like I said, a new frontier for us.
As COVID did with the digital resources.
Thank you.
Dr. Bowley? In your research, and this has been going on for some time, I think what I'm hearing from the board is that districts that have similar rigor to East Brunswick, they, a lot of what you found was districts that are putting a lot of different pieces together to create their own custom delivery, right?
Yes.
And were there any that were in the process? I know Anthony mentioned, I think he talked about one that was in the process, or maybe you did, that was in the process of revamping their program. Were any of them in the process of looking like we are at a new program or in that investigation that you're aware of?
Post-COVID?
Or even, yeah, this is even during the entire scope of, of your investigation?
More for a grade level than for a span of grade classes. Because they would look at their, their middle school math program or their K-2 program or their K-5, but not something like this.
Right.
Which is really a chunk that we really want to look at for the elementary job or elementary.
Right. So if the board were to ask about a certain district, they might find a district that had a lot of supplemental pieces put together for their own customization at their district, but nothing you could find that would be off the shelf, right? In some cases? Or they were using a program and then supplementing it?
Correct.
A lot locally? Okay.
Mark? Thank you for your presentation. Li Wu asked the question I was going to ask. What other challenges do you feel? I don't know if you actually answered his question. But what other challenges, you know, or pitfalls, or what else can you give us that you have looked at that could be a issue such?
I think from, I think from our experience, it's critical that we work very closely with the IT department of this vendor and ensure a seamless onboarding process. We have had challenges from other vendors with getting everything up and running, getting all the students on, on, you know, open access to all the resources there. So I think ensuring that we start that process early and we're in daily or weekly communication with the IT department of their organization as well as our IT department would help to implement this product seamlessly.
Was there any type of self-study? Meaning, how did you study this product? Or how did you think our township is going to, like Li Wu said, how the parents going to go for it? How to stay? What type of self-study did you think of?
I mean, we've been looking at the data for our mathematics program for, since 2018. We've been starting this process. A committee of various stakeholders, including teachers, were part of the process. We looked at what programs districts throughout the state of New Jersey were using and compared them to what we're using. And had.
Waited out.
Had the, the vendors come in and do demonstrations of their products for the committee.
Okay.
And then the top two, the committee went to other schools for a site, a site visit to see it in action.
Thank you, very much.
Okay, we'll go around again and again, until you guys have asked all the questions you want. But if somebody doesn't have a subsequent question, don't feel any pressure.
Just if I could, one quick question before, I'm sorry to insert myself. But Dr. Bowley, did you, I don't know if you did, but can you talk about the alignment of this program with the schedule that we currently have? You know, for, to be able to teach the block that we're able to teach this in?
Yes, so implementation of this program fits nicely with our restructuring, grade-level restructuring for next year. We can implement this program with fidelity. We will be able to ensure a 60-minute math period in grades K to six so that we will have a fully-aligned and fully-articulated math program in K to six with enough time to implement it with fidelity.
Thank you.
Jeff, you got another one?
Uh, yeah, a few, so I don't know how you want this to go. It's up to you.
We'll go as many rounds as you guys have questions.
I think the custodian leaves at 11.
Doesn't, okay. Does he have any questions? While he's still here. Going off, I'll, I'll start with, I thought in the curriculum meeting, the presentation was excellent. And the question that was asked, I believe by Ms. Lacks, was the question on who's using it in, in the district, which was a fair question then. But I did like the presentation. Now that that question's been asked and this list has been published, now I have a concern. I just went through while I was waiting my turn, the top 50 schools is rated on Mitch.com. And I only find three schools on this list that are in that top 50 list. Now, it doesn't, that doesn't necessarily lend itself to, to the answer being that this is not a good program. But I think you might have touched on a solution that other schools are using by adding components from other programs to enhance it, which would be my guess that it, there's no doubt in my mind that many of those top 50s are using this and something else. Has that option been explored to deliver the best potential in education? I'm not sure fidelity is the right answer, I, I guess, you know? And, and while that sounds good to have a, the one butt-to-kick philosophy to hang on this program, I'm, I'm beginning to waver from the fact that that, that may not be the right approach. Tell me I'm wrong and give me an answer on that.
I believe that districts do not implement the program with fidelity because of a lack of oversight on the part of the district. There's a lot of teachers and even when I'm contacted, like second-grade teachers or third-grade teachers within the same district are doing different things within the district. Because they're choosing what they want to do. They might use Envision, but they might use something else. Or they might use Everyday Math and they might use something else. So, and it might not necessarily be because something has to be fixed within Envision. It has to be because that's what they liked, that's what they would like to use. And I think going back before about a, a challenge that we really have to think about is that our teachers, and this is in all fairness. all fairness to everybody, are used to using Everyday Math. We've had some of our teachers who were the original adopters of Everyday Math. So, that's going to be one of the changes for us next year. And that's why the professional development piece is so important, because we will see through the professional development piece, all of the different resources, all those components of Envision that Envision can give to the district without having to go outside to supplement the program. And I think districts go outside a program because they don't know what's in the program. And I think that's a big piece. It's very easy to go to YouTube, or it's very easy to go to the web and find something to help kids that they think are helping kids, but it might not be vetted. It might be what a teacher thinks is okay to do. It's, it might not even be district-approved. We are very strict in this district that we want to make sure that what is happening in Bound is happening in Lawrence Brook, is happening in Morne Storger. We want the eight buildings to be as consistent as possible. We think that's really, really important. Now, I have twin kids at home, and I could tell you from my home district, they took the same math course at the same time, and it was like, it was, it was two different districts. And different districts do things differently. But in East Brunswick, we really want to do things and be consistent, because that's the right way to do it. And that's the fair way to do it. And that's how kids are going to learn the best.
I appreciate your answer, but I, I think that's quantifiably wrong. I mean, if, if 6% of the top 50 schools are using this program on this list, and, and I'll make the assumption that's with Fidelity, then the, the numbers would speak to 94% are doing something different. Perhaps it is the introduction of independent teaching on, on a teacher, but we don't know that data on what that is. I, I, you know what? I raise concerns on this. I'm not sure that, that your reasoning for doing this is, is supported by the data. From what you've provided us as the supporting data, again, out of the top 50 rated schools, only three are using, appear on this list. I will assume that others are using it in some other, with some other enhancement, whether it be independent teaching, in addition to components of other programs. My goal is to provide the best quality education for the students in East Brunswick, period. I don't care.
That's the most.
I don't care how we get there. And if it means enhancing, if you like this program as a foundation, I think that's great. But I have to believe, based on the data that I just looked at, there's got to be, people are doing something else. You know, where's South Brunswick? Where's West Windsor Plainsboro? Where, where are these schools? What are they using?
Actually shared that information. They were self, one was supplementing, one was using Everyday Math, and one was transitioning. Princeton, West Windsor Plainsboro, and South Brunswick.
And, and whatever they're doing is working. It, it's, it's working in, in respect to the data that's used to drive the results from, say, the niche. And, and I, I drill down into that data. I don't take it at face value. And in the components that addresses the specific thing, the data speaks to, this program's probably great, and other components would make it greater. And I do have a concern, as, as with Everyday Math, by making this wholesale commitment to one program with Fidelity, may in fact not be the best educational opportunity for our students, as supported by the data as listed. I, I think there's a hole in your presentation. I, I think that this, I think it begs the question, why aren't these other districts using it? And if they are, what else are they using with it? I'm more interested in adding a little bit more to the sandwich, if that's going to make it.
So, you're interested in understanding why other districts are doing what they're doing?
Oh, successfully. Let's, let's not forget that word. And, and yeah, I'm very interested in that.
And that will inform what we do.
Replicating that more than inventing something with Fidelity with a, a, a narrow lane of a singular product and direction.
Mm-hmm.
The data says that that might not be the best way. So-
I mean, I can't speak right here and now to what other districts are doing and why they're doing it. This program meets the needs of the students and staff in our district.
How do you know?
We can certainly, because it has all of the components that will help us meet the needs of all the students in the classrooms. It provides the data, it provides the resources for staff, for parents, for students.
I agree with you, Dr. Bulley, but as a foundational program, but again, the data supports that there is something else going on out there by the top 50 districts, 47 of the top 50 districts, as rated in the state, where they're doing something else. Is that a fair statement?
According to NIEC.
Pick, pick any US news. I, I only have this amount of time, and it's the first time I've seen this list. And I will dig into other measurement and metrics and KPIs that are used. But at first glance, I have to, I have to take pause.
Understood.
I think you have the foundation, but now I want to see what else we could add to, once again, provide the best educational opportunity for the students in East Brunswick.
Understood.
Thank you.
Beth, you have a question?
No.
I do. Mine is more about the practice of, of the math. So, remember, in some of the math, we had the lattice math, and we had learning subtraction by taking this and moving it there. For parents, it's a lot. Does this program, you feel, you feel good about how it's, how does it make it easier for the kids to do the math that's, without having to learn all these ancillary kind of activities, but still have the hands-on experience?
That's a very interesting question. So, I think what's very interesting to me, when you look at Everyday Math, it tries to teach kids math instinct, which kids supposedly have naturally. So, that's really, really hard to do. And lattice is something that is thousands of years old. It's a very, it's a very cool method, by the way. But it's not a very practical method to use. It's not a very practical method to use. So, this program is more, I think it's more traditional in its, its approach to how students will do multiplication and addition and subtraction, with adding all the other components that we have there.
Yes, because I, you know, I'm sure, maybe you mentioned in curriculum. So, I'm just asking, because I'm, I'm not on that. But, but like the spiraling too, like, does it go, that was a little confused. You know, as, as some people like spiraling, where you start the topic, then you stop it, then you come back to it. Is this doing that too? Or is it go through the whole topic?
This is more, this is more teaching a topic.
Yeah.
Right? And then go into the next topic.
Okay.
Because that's, that's another piece too, that is difficult. And again, at the time, the research said that that was the way to go.
Right. But this is, this is now moving from that and kind of making it more, you know, in a way that matches what's going on today.
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
So, building upon, you know, the questions that Lori and Jeff were asking, I think it's, when I look at, when I look at solving a problem, I look at benchmarking best practices and kind of, you know, going after the, the top performers and seeing what they're doing and learning from them. So, I, I do agree that we need to take another look at what the top performing districts are doing and why they're doing. I think it's worth picking, you know, not 50 of them, right, picking a small handful and talking to them with some depth to understand why they are where they are. I suspect some of it is, this technology is evolving, right? So, what I'm hearing you say is that in 2018, 2019, Envision revamped their product line. So, that may make them best in class. But at the time, like, districts are not going to chase technology. If they set a technology path in 2015, they're not going to go and change it in 2018, because they've made an investment. So, that may very well be a reason. So, it's not a reason to disqualify Envision, but I think it is worth the inquiry to look at just a, a small, you know, a handful of those top performing districts and understand their evolution. And we may well hear, we made a commitment in 2015, we're sticking with it, you know, and, and we're going to look at it on a five, 10-year cycle, or whatever, you know, they end up saying. But I, I do think it's, it'd be something I'd be interested in, in, in understanding. It, it sounds to me that Envision, if indeed they evolved their product in 2018, they may well be, based on your assessment of them and their, their main competitors, that they are now best in class. The others just may not be on the cycle to replace it. So, I don't want to throw out Envision just because, yeah, Princeton's not using, you know, whatever township we want to compare to. That's not a reason to throw it out. But it would be good to, to understand that.
Understood. Will do.
Well, so, Lori, do you have another question?
Yes. So, I'm sorry that I asked such a loaded question. But that was, you know, that was my curiosity, because we, as a top performing district, we always want to know what the other ones that are similar to us are doing. So, one of the things I wanted to touch upon with that is, when you talked about the supplementary resources needed, I noticed that Math Prime is on here. So, the reason I asked the question originally was because we have such an incredibly secondary, strong math program. So, obviously, we want the fundamentals and the basis for these kids, because what these kids do in math when they get to the high school amazes me, and thank God I don't have to help any children with math. But I was just curious, when you, when I see Math Prime on here, is, is Envision going to have its own, for example, Math Prime? Or how does that work in terms of like the honors level for the kids that need that extra enrichment at the fifth grade, sixth grade level?
So, currently, Math Prime is on there because Everyday Math, the Everyday Math program in grade six, really is primarily for Math Six. So, we supplement the math, the Everyday Math sixth grade program for Math Prime.
Mm-hmm.
Because the majority of those kids go into Algebra I as seventh graders. So, we need to supplement that. Now, what's nice about the Envision program, through that component Success Maker, Success Maker provides support, but it also provides enrichment. So, we can almost tailor a program in grade six for our prime students based off of Success Maker that'll address some seventh grade standards, which is what we're basically doing in the sixth grade, in Math Prime, because we're, we're giving them seventh grade standards when they're in sixth grade, so they can vault into eighth grade class Algebra I as seventh graders.
And, and does this start, so, does that mean the Math Prime program goes away? So, when kids get to sixth grade, you're going to have a sixth grade math program? What happens to those honors level Math Prime kids?
We'll still have, we'll still have Math Prime, but rather than having to supplement from an outside source-
So, Envision will cover for our-
Correct. Through, through that component Success Maker.
And-
So, there's not only Envision, but there's a Success Maker part of it that is its partner-
Okay.
That helps with the differentiation piece and provides support and enrichment.
Okay. Because that was one of my concerns, because way back when I, you know, there were children in elementary school, for example, that I saw that were ahead in math. And, and certainly, there's no, there seems to be no fans of Everyday Math here, myself included. One of the things that I noticed, and we've tried to kind of take away that tag program, was that there were children in fifth grade that lost the year of math, in my opinion, that were your, your heavy, you know, great math students, that basically the teachers didn't know what to do with them, because Math Prime didn't give them that. And you really didn't have Math Prime yet. You, you kind of did a little bit, but you, you didn't. So, I saw students that were being given, you know, here's some, you know, multiplication problems for you to do, when the other kids are doing that. And the kids, really, in my opinion, didn't get that math year. So, I'm, I'm happy with Math Prime, and I understand what you're saying. I just, will Envision help to rectify that for those kids even as early as fifth grade, and maybe fourth grade as well?
Yeah. The Success Maker is a K-8 program. It's a K-8 component.
So, Success Makers is going to be your tech, for lack of, for our honors at the elementary level?
It can also be support. It, it's a differentiated program. See, that, that's
Okay. So, it's going to support the kids that need the additional help, and it's going to enrich the kids that are far beyond?
Correct.
And that will start early?
I think that's really what is, is great about Envision, is that it will help us meet the spectrum from kids that need support and kids that are advanced. And that's all from its own, from its own components, we'll be able to do that.
Okay. Because that's a lot, and, and why I asked the question, as I said, because quite honestly, I, I think that some of these districts out there should be looking at us and saying, what are they doing? Because we're the district to beat. So, but a lot of my, the reason I asked that was, is because, as Jeff said, some of these are super successful districts like ours. And I know that these kids, when they get up here, the math level is so high. And I think, we've always talked about transitions. I, I worry for that transition for the kids coming out of elementary, or even Hammerhill, and then super speed into tough math. So, if you feel that this is going to give them that support for those high academic achievers in math, then that's, that's always been a concern of mine, to make sure, because our rigor is so great at the, the secondary level. So, if you feel confident, then that's, it gives you feel a little better. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Dr. Vlasky, did you want to say something?
At the end, I will.
Oh, okay.
That's for last?
Was there an option to do a pilot of this program? Have some classes actually use it for a few months or a semester? And if so, why, why did we choose not to use a pilot?
I would say that, you know, our, since we started this process in 2018, and with the interruption of COVID coming out of this process, we wanted to move forward with securing approval, securing the funding, securing the onboarding with the IT department, securing the PD in the springtime, so that we could move forward and be in place in September with the grade level restructuring to hit the ground running and do that comprehensive overhaul K to six with our primary elementary schools and Hammerhill upper elementary school. We felt that this was the right time to abandon Everyday Math and just move forward with our vetted program.
I'm, I'm going to ask this next as a, out of ignorance. Let's say we approved it. Is, is it still possible to do a pilot in the spring?
I'm sure we could. Yes.
To just, you know, if, if we approved it, if we took it, to do a pilot, to kind of do a bit of troubleshooting, perhaps, before all the kids have it? So, we would be able to pilot it if we wanted to in the spring?
I'm sure we would be able to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Lee, would you have another question?
Yes. So, you mentioned that Evasion is one of the most popular math programs. How many other programs did you evaluate or study before you chose Evasion? You know, my own search shows that Evasion just one of the most popular ones. Are the others, Reveal Math, Go Math, Connect Math, Rocket Math, World Class Math? Did you guys study and review all other programs before you chose the Evasion? So, that's my answer.
Many programs were looked at. The programs that would meet the needs are prerequisites, were here, listed here. And then a deeper dive was taken by the, by the group of stakeholders into these four.
Okay. Thank you.
President Becker took half of my question about the pilot program. So, the other half was these site visits. Was the team able to go into a classroom? Because we can talk about stakeholders all day, but if we don't see kids using this, we'll never know if it's going to be effective. So, can you tell me about the visits? Did you see kids? Were they excited?
Yeah, we did site visits for Reveal Math and for Envision.
And where, too? And what, what districts, please?
We went into Jackson, and we went into Biscataway, which are two neighboring districts that, that in the area. And again, Envision, the Envision program at Jackson was being implemented with Fidelity. It was, it was, it really was being implemented well, and there's a lot of positive pieces of it there. And then after that is when, that's when we put the suggestion for sixth grade, to develop the sixth grade program specifically for Envision.
Okay. But I'm still not getting my question. Were the kids excited? Like, the team said they were excited. People said they were excited. Tell me the kids' reactions. Tell me, when you're watching children use this in a classroom, were they excited? Were they happy? Did they look like they were just going through the motions? I mean-
No. I mean, the, the kids, it's not, it's not just in front of a computer. I mean, the kids were involved in groups, and they were doing rotations the way we would do it. The kids seemed excited. You know, there's four adults in the room, which kind of makes everything a little bit different when kids, when, when we go in. But they seemed much more excited with the Envision program than the other site visits that we had done.
All right. I'm still considering what President Becker said. I understand that it would be especially good with the restructuring to roll out the math, like, the, the timing does seem to align. I just have some pause about the size of the investment for the district. And I am so team, let's move away from Everyday Math. It's not that I want to stay there. I very much want to move forward. I just, this is a very, very large investment with no pilot whatsoever. Even if we do it in the spring, we're talking about committing to the spending in the fall to do it in the spring. I, I appreciate the idea of doing it in the spring to troubleshoot, because that's an excellent way, I think, for us to see where more PD will be needed. I mean, seeing it in practice is much different than seeing it in a presentation from the company. But the, the total, yeah, that was going to be my question. This is a very, very large commitment.
We're not settled on that.
Okay.
It's like 27, but then you can get a discount, right, based on the district, 27. How much, per kid? What was the dollar amount on the website, in a certain?
No, it's a, it's a total, it's a total cost for the entire package.
Oh, good.
But we're still working with the company and trying to come up with a reasonable number that works for us, as well as a- that works for us, as well as what our offsets are, because there'll be components that will no longer be part of the budget. So, we're still working on that, but we've already gotten the overall cost down about, to about approximately $200,000. Now, the thing is that there's a component of it that is a, is a every six-year cost. So, that sounds like, you know, the overall sounds like a high number, but then it has to be divided out, because the recurring cost is one component that happens once every six years, not every year. So, you know, we'll, we'll come up with what those final numbers are, but, but we're, we're making headway, and my initial analysis is, I think will be, we will not have a, a jump in the budget to be able to handle this, I think, to be able to handle this.
Well, my other question, or my other part of it was, I was thinking, but we've all said, I mean, I was writing on this as you were speaking originally, about the list of other districts that are using it. And I was trying to think of variables, because COVID really did shut down. I mean, if you were looking at this in 2018, and then COVID changes things, districts weren't reevaluating math programs during COVID, I don't think. So, I don't know, I don't know if just comparing ourselves to the other top performing districts is enough, but I would be interested in seeing other districts that were already one-to-one with devices pre-COVID, that are comparable what they were using. Because this seems very, you know, this is obviously technologically heavy, which is fantastic. But many districts went one-to-one with devices because of COVID. But, in my mind, I'm interested in what people were using that were already one-to-one at the elementary level before everything became emergent and we had to move that way. Because, yeah, I still do have this, this is a very, very large jump in my mind. Understood. Can get that information.
What's your guys' Plan B?
Well, if this is not supported, then we'll stay with Everyday Math. We wouldn't.
Do you have another system?
We could certainly slow down implementation by a year. We could take a year to pilot. We could stay with Everyday Math.
Was there another system that was, ah, we like this one, but not quite?
The committee likes this program the best. This was the.
Hands down.
Yes, hands down.
Can you go into, I don't wanna take up too much of my time.
Okay.
Can you tell us why another program was not looked at?
None of the programs were as comprehensive or cohesive. So, this program offered all of the amenities that we're looking for. It speaks to the staff, it provides that PD video, it speaks to the parents, it offers the video tutorial help for the students, it has the data collection piece, it has the diagnostic screener, it has the intervention component, it just has it all. It's a one-stop shop, and we feel that this is the right program for us. This pulls together so much of the work that we're doing, working with our special education department, working with our ESL program. This can really address and help us to differentiate, to ensure all students are accessing grade-level mathematics.
I appreciate that. I, I mean, I'm all for a pilot.
I'm so sorry.
I'm all for a pilot program, you know, a pilot program.
If I could just add, the only, the only piece we were a bit reluctant with, with a pilot this year, was that we have everybody transitioning back to school after a very tumultuous past 18 months. So, we're getting kids back used to being in school together, doing rotations, working in groups, taking written tests. We took all our tests online last year. So, we didn't really feel that this was the appropriate time, at least for the first semester, to do a pilot. It seemed to be, you know, we were very, very aware of SEL and, and trying to make things as comfortable for the students and for the teachers, frankly, and for everybody coming back to this environment, which we have not been used to. It's really challenging, all of a sudden, when you come back. Remember, we came back and we did Start Strong, and we did other components that were, you know, that we had to get the data to see where we stood with, with our, our kids. To add a pilot onto that, at least for the first semester, we thought would be very, very challenging.
Here's just last comment. I mean, I, I heard so many great things from this board tonight, that really, it's so much to think about, and my real takeaway is, and no fault of your own, I, I think what we've added to is the due diligence list. I, I just don't think we're complete on this evaluation. Uh, that's my takeaway. I think you've completed a great portion of it by adding your confidence in this program. But some of these issues raised tonight, they're very, very big. And, you know, we've taken 13 years with Everyday Math. I have zero problem waiting one more year to get this right. I would hate to get it wrong. And, um, I, I think, I might have been Mark Frangello, I'm all for putting the brakes on this and completing the due diligence, whether it be pilot or any, any of the vetting of other districts. But at this point, I am absolutely not ready to launch. I, I don't think I've heard enough, so I have no further questions on this.
And we're committed to get you the information you're looking for, Mr. Winston.
Okay, thank you.
Laura?
Yeah, I'm just curious, uh, you know, in English, we do very well with a reader's workshop, and, and, and I know there's the Cosmical Math Workshop, and we do some of that already. Is this, is this going to build upon that, where kids have a choice, and they, you know, we were told about the excitement of having their own projects, and, so is that the small group instruction that you're telling, is it math workshop style?
Yes, I, I, I think if you were to go into a 16-minute block right now at the elementary, we really try to model ourselves after ILA, where the first 15 minutes is the mini lesson.
Okay.
And then the next 45 minutes, the students are usually going through rotations, a teacher table, a technology station, an independent station, a group station, however the teacher has it configured, with time allocations depending, and that's, those stations are differentiated. So, we really have changed the way that we've done our instruction to kind of follow the, the ILA model. Um, and again, a lot of the components of these health decisions really tie into that workshop model.
So, you can still do that with Envision? You know, it's not like skill and drill kind of thing?
Absolutely.
Not that there isn't room for drill, and, and people have to practice multiplication pages and things like this, but you still have that opportunity to have the individualized instruction in groups.
Absolutely. And the key is, is that not everyone needs the extra practice, but some kids might.
Correct.
And that's the whole differentiation piece, that we're using the data to collect and see who needs extra support and who doesn't need extra support.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any additional questions right now. Laura?
No, thank you. I appreciate you taking all the time.
Lots of questions.
Um, just logistically, if, let's say we decided we wanted to do a pilot, what is the timeframe? How much time do you need from approval to implementation? Like, let's say we did a pilot in the spring, and after the end of the, we decide, yes, we're gonna go with it. Would that give you enough time to implement it in September? What is, what is the amount of time that you need from approval to implementation?
I guess we.
I'm, I'm gonna jump in for a second. There's a very important part that I think is being missed in terms of pilot.
Budget?
Absolutely. Because, first of all, and I don't know what the, what the cost would be for a pilot, but there's a cost component to that.
Sure.
Okay, so we need to be cognizant of that. And if a decision being made, you know, late spring, our budget will pretty much be done at that point.
Well, that was gonna lead me to, um, I, I'm gonna stick to my own rule. I had some finance questions, but I said one question per person, so I asked my question about the pilot lead time, and I do wanna get back to the finance, when it's my turn again. Thanks, Bernie. No, I, I already thought a budget. That was my follow-up, but, um, Li Wu?
So, uh, so at the curriculum committee meeting, that meeting, we have more than 40 attendees. I believe more than 35 of them are teachers. I asked the question several times, what's the weak point for the Envision? Because everyone's talking about it's a perfect match for East Brunswick, it's a perfect tool for our student. I asked, I believe, it's two or three times, what's the weak point for this Envision? I got no answer. Everyone says it's perfect. So, that's why we'll come up here. So, my question is, so when was this list compiled? Is this very recent, or maybe one year ago? Is there any update to this list? The schools are using the Envision. So, when was this list compiled?
We're committed to going back to the company and getting the most current list. We're also committed to looking into the top performers in the state and getting a understanding of what they're using and why they're using it, and we'll get that information to you as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Hearing a lot of the comments, I'm, I'm leaning towards pumping the brakes, in my personal opinion. I don't think there's anything that I can see by December 2nd for me personally to be voting on this thing. I don't know what the rush for December 2nd was, because at the, at the beginning, right, it was said that we're voting on this next meeting?
I wanted to let everyone know we weren't voting tonight.
Yeah.
That was the main thing.
But, it was gonna be on the agenda for next meeting, correct?
That was the plan.
To me, way too soon. Like I said, I don't know. I kinda like what you said about, can we do something in the spring, whatever, and I just think there's a lot more things to look at. No, no fault of the team, no, no blame here. Just with all the questions, they were great questions. I think there's a lot more to look at. That's where I'm at.
That, that's a great point, and I agree with everyone who's been saying, we're having it really good. This is way too important, not to dissect it the way we are, and I believe that Dr. Bolesky's been taking copious notes, and it's gonna address a lot of our things when we're done with our questions. Thank you, Mark. Good point. Heather?
I think my question actually comes over, I'm not sure if it's to you or to Bernie, but if we go this way, how long is our commitment to this program? Is, are we contracted in for a certain amount of time?
I believe it's a six-year commitment.
Six-year commitment. Thank you.
Can the committee look at the program? And you guys, now, we're asking questions, we didn't, did anyone see the program? Did you look at it? Who's chair of the, you know, the chair of the committee?
Yeah, but that's, that's a question for George, actually.
Well, would it be appropriate for the top board members, the president, vice president, and the chair of the committee to?
To bring the resources in?
Yeah, 'cause we're asking questions, and none of us have really seen it.
But, what do we know about it? I mean, that's why we referred to the, I appreciate that, Mark, but you could show me a math program, and I don't have, I have zero training to evaluate its effectiveness on, on students.
Well, I mean, you know, I would trust other people's opinions, Laura.
Well, it was.
It was a question, I'm not making a definitive answer.
It was a good question, but in terms of the, the decision to present the actual program to board members would be Dr. Bowley and, and Dr. Bolesky. I know you looked at Li Wu, and it was no disrespect to Li Wu, would anybody who's chair of that committee, that's not a, that, that decision would be theirs in terms of using the committee as a pilot, so to speak. But it was a good question, Mark. Question mark, get it?
Yeah.
Question mark. Okay, Jeff?
I'm done, thank you.
Barbara?
Um, and thank you for your presentation and the work that you do. I wanna thank the committee and thank the teachers that spent the time to investigate all this. And please don't regard our questions as a lack of respect for all the work that you're doing. We know that you are the experts, and we defer to that. Um, you know, it's just a big commitment, and we wanna do our part to make sure that everything is, you know, thoroughly vetted from our end. But, it's exciting that you're, you're involved in the work to get us a new math program. I think we all can agree that Everyday Math has seen its best days, and that our students need the additional support, whether it be in advancing their, you know, as a, if they're ahead, or whether they need support to catch up, or all the kids after COVID need additional time with math and hands-on activities. So, we thank you for taking the time.
Um, I just wanna comment, I, I think Dr. Bowley accurately summarized the, the follow-up items that I'm, I'm interested in seeing. And so, um, I know the committee has, it's, I, I don't, I don't see us as rushing into this. I know the committee's been working on this since 2018. So, so I think a lot of thought has been put into it. You know, and as a layperson, as not as an educator, I couldn't look at a program and say, is this good or is this not good, right? So, um, I do defer to the expertise of the, of the, of the teachers and the staff and the, and the experts who are, are trained in assessing these things. But I think the addition of the additional information that you've committed to get for us will help seal the understanding of, you know, with kind of how, how the top-performing districts get to where they are. And frankly, if someone were to look at us as a top-performing district, they'd say, let's get Everyday Math. So, there's a flaw in saying, just because, you know, a, a top-performing district is using a certain program, it's not the program that makes it top-performing, it's the staff. And, and that's why I say, you know, I do respect the opinion of the staff and the committee, professional committee that evaluated it.
Still done?
Um, no. Okay. Um, Bernie, I, I very well wear the fact that we would need to budget for, um, an investment. So, when I, when I said about piloting in the spring, it wasn't with disrespect or disregard for what you, and, and all of the, the central office team will have to do with the budget. I'm just wondering if, and you obviously don't have this now, so I am not asking you this for, for this now. But if we were to add up all the line items in the current budget for what we're currently spending on the math program that we now have, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be approximately within the range of, I'm using $200,000, because that was the number you threw out, but I totally don't hold you to that, and I understand you're still negotiating with that. So, I'm just curious, that would be a piece of information I'd want in terms of the timeframe we have to make a decision.
Mm-hmm.
Is, are we already spending? I mean, I, would we have to do that much adjustment in the budget? That's basically a rhetorical question, because I don't expect you to have those figures. But, my question question, this is the last one for me. If the board decided that we did not want to move ahead with Envision, for any of the reasons said tonight, obviously, we would be taking a consensus, but did you come across, when you mentioned that there were other districts, particularly some of the districts that have been referenced as high-performing, that were using hybrids, or were, were kind of making a mosaic of different pieces of programs and different aspects of different programs? Did you come across in your due diligence, pieces that we could use to enhance the current math program while you went back to the drawing board, so to speak? I'm just curious.
I did not. Did you miss the movement on it? No, we did not.
You didn't? Okay. Okay, thank you. And again, it was a terrific presentation. There is no doubt in my mind the amount of hard work that has gone into this. And our questions, as, as Barbara said before, as other people have said, are not meant as any form of disrespect or disregard for that. This is, we feel the weight of generations and decades of parents and ghosts of former parents and students pleading with us, no more Everyday Math. So, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Li Wu?
Jeff's ahead.
I'm done.
Uh, I'm, one more comment. I want to thank you again. I'm a big math fan, so I like math, even, you know, I'm at this age, once in a while, I can do some math by myself for fun. So, I want to, I, I understand how much effort you and your team put to this program. I know how much homework you did. And I believe every student should be proud of you, because you guys are so good. Thank you.
Just a comment, I wanna echo, especially what Mrs. Reese said, President Becker, and everybody. Yeah, this isn't, this isn't a dig at the, the team, I mean, and the 40 other staff members that aren't here, you know? I'm almost always on board. If, if that many staff members in our administration comes to us and says, this is what we need, my hand goes up yes. Uh, you know, we're not voting tonight, and I'm not voting yes tonight, but we're just, you know, we're just concerned, because it is a big commitment. And, uh, that's it, though. But, thank you very much. The team, team did a great job.
And we certainly wanna have no unresolved questions.
Thank you.
Heather, Mark, any last questions?
I do.
Heather?
I wanted to echo a similar thought to what Mark said. I appreciate the work, especially of a committee this large, on a subject so important. Math program is substantial. My other thought, though, is that I feel like East Brunswick is one of the few districts I've seen that really does embrace complete fidelity to a program. I've seen that really does embrace complete fidelity to a program, even at individual grade levels. There's, there's value in it in some places where I see it. There's other places where over the years I've looked at it and questioned why we do some of the things the way we do with the complete across the board. You know, everything is kept the same, and I know where we want to provide the similar situations. But I think that leads me to this idea of like, the districts that are doing hybrid things, that are using some of this but some of something else, or I, I've seen places that have bought into packages that are very, very large and robust, and the platform offers so much. And I feel like in the hybrid situation, when that happens, staff that want to use it do, and staff that feel overwhelmed by the side of, size of the package, say no thank you. And then I think we run into what we're always trying to avoid, which is we really do want all of our children to get the same excellence in education. So I do think we have a lot to talk about with this, because I do think that there is value in that if we're going to go with a program, we should go with something that goes across several grade levels and has the fidelity and has the same opportunities for all of our students.
That's a great comment, and just so you know, we are committed to implementing research-based programs in all schools to ensure equity for all the students across the district, and we believe that if you're going to understand the efficacy of a program, it must be implemented with fidelity or there, or you don't really know if it's working or not, if you're not doing it correctly. So we are committed to that.
Thank you.
Mark, any last questions, or are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Dr. Beal?
Yes, ma'am.
He had some things to say?
I do, thank you. I want to affirm to the, to the board that I've witnessed the intensity and the hard work this committee put together to get to this point, but I heard clearly from the board tonight legitimate questions and concerns. And in addition to benchmarking against top-performing school districts, which I heard clearly tonight, and especially those, as was indicated, those that were already in a one-to-one platform pre-COVID, I think we need to do that work, but I think it might be helpful, listening to the questions, if we come back with a subsequent presentation, taking our math data and looking at how envision can support our students using our data and, and show that correlation with our students and show some kind of representation. I think that might be enlightening for the board to see how our students could benefit from this program. But certainly, I do want to mention about the pilot program, and I sat very silent because I wanted to hear what the board had to say, and Mr. Giuliani mentioned about the financial commitment. One of the, one of the most important parts of my job these days is measuring the capacity of the organization. And I will tell you that this year, and as I've mentioned to you in previous meetings, this year is harder than last year. You can talk to just about any individual, and it is just harder. I am concerned from a human factor of trying to implement a pilot where we would, we would be able to extract legitimate and authentic data. I don't think these are authentic times, and I think there's a lot of other layers that everybody is dealing with.
It's a very fair point.
So with that, I think what we should do is we should meet with the team, come back, determine how we can prepare a subsequent presentation and not, not pigeonhole this into a particular night right now.
Great.
But to figure out how we can answer your questions, and then when that presentation is ready, how we can schedule that before the board again.
Agreed.
I don't see any benefits coming back with us being able to get to 75% and then asking you to, you know, be okay with it. So we want to do that. So I think we'll do that and figure out where we are on the scale. But I, I do have serious concerns about just the, the human capacity of establishing a pilot at the end of this school year.
Very fair point. And the other question I should have asked about timeline is, if, forget about a pilot, if we, if we're not voting on this next meeting, you will still have time if the outcome is to go with this, you would still have time. That's why I asked how long you would need. So there is no pressure to have that vote, as Dr. Bolesky eloquently stated. And the point about the pilot and the playing against the current culture is, I think, a very fair point. Is everybody comfortable with not, not voting on this next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you again. You clearly, I think we've, I think, hopefully, we made clear what, what clarification we still need, because we don't want to give you undue work, but you do have some homework. And there will be a pop quiz, so.
We'll be ready.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, and thank you all for your thoughtful questions.
I want to mention to the board that, and I think we've all kind of felt this way, because we've touched on it, as, as we've each been sitting here listening to the discussion, I think this was a fantastic discussion, mainly because there were so many people piggybacking on what others said, and that's great, and that, that's terrific. And there were opinions I had about this after seeing it at the curriculum meeting that were changed because I listened to what things other people had said, and that's, that's what we're here to do. And we're also here to ask the questions that we know the parents are going to ask and perhaps the staff. So I, I just want to compliment all of you on a terrific discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Which brings us up to the good of the cause for the public. Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves. Please keep in mind, if anyone is here to address the public, that this is not an opportunity for a dialogue between the public and the board, that this is an opportunity for residents to come and express themselves to the board, and all specific questions will be addressed by an administrator. We are not here to ignore your questions, we're here to listen to them. So with that being said, and a reminder that participants are limited to three-minute duration, is there anyone wishing to speak to the board tonight? Seeing none, I will close the public portion. I would actually like to ask, I would like to move the entire agenda from.
If there's anything to be said.
I'm so sorry?
Unless there's anything to be said.
I, I was going to say that.
Just checking.
Listen to me, Bernie.
Just checking.
Pushing it, pushing it. I would like to move the agenda from the Board of Education right through the Transportation Services item. First, asking if there is anything anyone would like separated out. Lori?
Number three on the Board of Education.
The minutes?
Yes.
Is that because you're going to abstain?
Yes.
You can just abstain.
You can just abstain, we don't have to.
Sorry?
That's okay, no problem. Anybody else? Is there anything else anybody would like separated out?
We can ask questions on anything.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I just meant that it wouldn't be part of the, the joint vote, but of course we can ask questions. So, can I have a motion for this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sizmar. Seconded by Mr. Carangelo. Is there any questions? Susanna, then Lori.
So I'm a couple of different items to.
Go ahead, go for it.
First one is the Board of Education Bylaws, item two, regarding conduct of board meetings. Where is the high school report on that agenda? Because I think we talked about moving the high school reports earlier. Is that the item called special, or I can't come to it right now?
Conduct of board meetings revision, Susanna? Bylaws? That was the first bylaw?
The, the, is the item called presentations and or special reports?
Oh.
Is that the high school report?
Oh, no, also, didn't you have asked for a new, new business and old business?
That's in there.
It's in there.
Oh, okay.
But the intent was to move the student representative report right into super.
I think, I think that, I think that would constitute a special report.
Yeah.
That's a special report. That would be any special report, but that clearly would be the, because they're really giving you an update of what's happening at the high school.
That's all I want to confirm.
Yep.
Because we still have at the back Board Committee and Organization reports, and that's where the high school rep.
Yeah, but if you notice, it doesn't say high school rep. For instance, if Nora was here tonight, I was going to ask her to do her report right after Dr. Bolesky.
Okay. So I just, that's, that was.
Yep, no problem.
Okay.
Make sure we could move our high school rep up earlier.
Of course.
Because we said it many times.
Yeah, but it's, I was, we were going to do it tonight, actually, but unfortunately, she's, she's not here.
No, wait, wait a second. Nora came and sat in my seat one night, so maybe I could go and give the report from her seat.
Go ahead.
I don't know if it would be as good, though.
Well, I could make it a tale.
Ms. Becker, I do believe Nora was involved in the Powder Puff Games.
Oh, I wasn't, I, when I said Nora wasn't here, that wasn't a criticism. Nora's awesome. I just wanted to assure everybody that if Nora had been here, if there wasn't a Powder Puff or whatever, she would have been asked to do her report, because if you notice on the agenda, it just says committee reports, okay?
I just wanted to confirm.
No problem, it's happening, babe.
Wonderful.
Stay tuned for next meeting. She better be here, okay? Lou? Okay.
And the second question I had was just on Financial Services, item three, capital reserve. I noticed, you know, there's an item for AFSB, equipment replacement, and there was a question I had asked regarding availability of, of funding that, that was created through the legislature for school districts regarding AFSB. I wanted to know if we investigated availability of that funding.
We are looking into it. I've already referred that to our architects.
Great.
And we've engaged in initial conversation. I have another one scheduled on Monday.
Okay. Yeah, it would be great to hear an update on that because, you know, as I mentioned, that's, that's limited amount of money, limited time, and first come, first served, I think. So, thank you.
Suzanne, I, I don't know if we thanked you for bringing that to our attention, but thank you, really. You're always, you've always been a terrific source of grand information and the most up-to-date information on energy, and you've always tried to include the district, and it's really appreciated.
Yeah, just, you know, trying to make sure we can take advantage of the available resources out there.
You've been awesome about doing that from the moment you got on the board, and if nobody said thank you, then it's long overdue.
No, 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 no need at all, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's all, that's all the questions.
Okay. Thank you. No, I meant, thank you for, thank you. Next? Lori?
I have to follow that?
Yes.
Okay, so a couple of quick questions. The bid rejection for the snow plowing and snow removal services?
Yes.
How does that impact, are we doing anything with the township or not? I apologize.
No.
I thought Dr. Bolesky was going to do this.
Whatever needs to be done.
Can I say he's getting too old for that? No, can't.
Oh, no, that's, that's a harassment.
I know. Well, you know, if he was young as Janet, or if he looked as good as Janet, you know, come on. No, I would think he was.
Are we on Victor's age? I haven't made one age joke yet tonight. Okay.
Sorry. Okay, so the township cannot be a help to us in this?
They, they have enough trouble getting the roads done, quite frankly.
Because didn't we do something, was it the brine, didn't we do something then last year?
No, we, we were working with them to utilize the brine that they produce, but that, that's not the snow removal, the actual snow removal, you know, they take care of the roads.
Okay.
And we take care of our properties.
I was just trying to figure a way to use, okay. It's a good idea. Makes sense, right? Oh, then I just have a silly question.
No.
The, that's a silly question. Another one, did you just say? So the, the invitational for the, I noticed for the sports, that they pay $425 per team. Did we break down a per person cost for the girls because there's less or not full teams? Is that why?
We equalized it because we didn't know if the, and this is just based on estimation. So we equalized it among all.
This will be our first lady.
Yeah.
Okay, but something like every other one, like the basketball and the wrestling, it said the $425 per team, but you had a per person or a per athlete cost?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's what I was questioning.
Yeah, okay.
Why we did, I didn't know if it was that we have less girls or less teams, because it was a 45 per wrestler or 425 per team.
Yeah, at this time, we're not really sure. It's be the first lady wrestling tournament, which I'm very excited about, but especially based on the great success our ladies had, all of our ladies had this fall.
Yeah.
So at this time, we may have as many as 16 lady wrestlers.
Wow.
So we're very, very excited about that. So we're hoping that we get the teams in, but we wanted to equalize, as Dr. Bolesky was saying, equalize the two tournaments.
Okay.
So there's not a cost per person on this one.
I got you, because they're going to have.
Where the other one was.
That's what I figured, I just wanted to ask because, and then thank you to the Lawrence Brook PTA, because I think that these kids are going to love the gazebo, that's a big hit at Memorial. It's, it's nice on so many levels, not just the hot sun, gives kids a place to, to be out of the sun, but it's, it's, you know, when kids can be within six feet, it's going to be really nice.
Oh, yeah.
So thank you to the PTA, that was quite a, a nice gift.
Yeah, I was also going to comment on that, not a question, but that to thank the Lawrence Brook PTA, besides the fact that it's a terrific addition for the school, we always need to be reminded how hard our PTAs work, because it's an incredible amount of work. Particularly, think about raising money during a pandemic, doing fundraising during a pandemic. Our PTAs are just amazing, supportive of the kids, and as a member, as a resident of the Lawrence Brook community, I look forward to gazing upon the gazebo. It'll be.
And past PTA presidents, I thank you.
And a past PTA president.
At Lawrence Brook.
Yes, very past. It'll be wonderful, wonderful to drive past every day. Any other questions?
I have.
Li Wu, stupid question or no?
No, I just.
Laurie is. Oh, Barbara has a question. Okay, Li Wu then Barbara.
Li Wu first, then.
Li Wu first, then Barbara.
Yes, no problem.
No stupid questions, okay.
There are no stupid questions.
There are no stupid questions, correct.
But I have no question, just one comment. So we approved to pay Victus for his unused leave. A school district like this size could make Victor very, very busy. I, you know, this payment cannot, never cannot compensate your sacrifice to our students, to our staff, to this district. I just want to thank you.
Any other questions on the agenda? Barbara?
Yeah, I, I do echo.
Last, but not, not least, never.
I echo what Li Wu said about Dr. Bolesky, so many hours and so many days, you know, nights that he spends. We're very fortunate to have him, especially during these turbulent times, we're in good hands, so thank you.
With the entire team, yeah, not just me, just the entire team.
But this particular part was about you, so of course the entire team. And, and my other question is on number three on the capital reserve about Churchill being a school temporary class unit. I'm hoping that in the future we can have some more discussion, and I know we showed some pictures and we talked about it, but maybe some kind of presentation with the parents and explain to them a little bit more, so give them some preparation, like we talked about preparing with the math, you know, preparing the parents so that they are aware of what's involved, what it looks like. We did show a slide a while back, and we are, you know, high quality, but I think, and we talked about putting it on the internet so people could see, but just to have an opportunity for folks to, I'm sure you're going to do that, but I just wanted to mention.
No, Barbara, that's great, because we heard from a lot of parents during the campaign cycle that they really would like to have an opportunity to see more visuals of it. So, thanks, Barbara, thanks for bringing that up.
And I would also like to, once we get the units installed and get them equipped, is, is not only just an open house, but create a video, like a walkthrough of what the facility looks like, so they can look at, you know, at their pleasure.
Yeah, nothing like an open house, letting them see it.
Can you put at the Planning Board Committee, you presented the video, Bernie?
Yes.
Can you put at the planning board committee, you presented the video, Bernie, maybe that's something we could put on.
Right.
The township, you know, did get a chance, if you were at the planning board committee, you could take the chance to see that.
Good suggestion.
But that may be nice, because it showed that it's not, you know, the trailers of our days, looking at Jeff and Mark and Mark and myself, who lived in trailers at the high school, it's fancy.
Anybody else question on the agenda? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Yes. Mr. Carangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gloss.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Okay, yes, but I'm going to abstain on Board of Education item number three, the minute's coming around November 4th. And that's an excused absence, I was looking at colleges, right?
Noted.
Excuse.
Mrs. Reese.
Where's your note?
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes. Motion carries for the entire agenda. Thank you, Board, for your cooperation in doing that. Which now brings us up to committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause of the Board, is there any, anything more? Barbara, and then Jeff. Barbara, Jeff, then LeWu, then Heather.
This is a community program advisory committee report, wonderful participation by everyone involved, and I thank the entire committee. We had a, Emery Gilbert does an amazing job, as does her entire staff, and there's so many activities available for the students, both in prior to school and after school, and enrichment programs, and how they, it's amazing all that they've done during these times, coming back from COVID and really getting the whole program in full swing like this. It's impressive, their efforts. I made a little couple of notes, is that they even went into mini camps in the summer. They don't want to be in competition with the township, so in the week between school ending and the camp starting, a lot of parents needed care for their children, right? It's a service to the community as well. They did a great job, and they offered all type, in fact, they had waiting lists, because they didn't have, right, the vendors, enough vendors, so they're working with the vendors on that, but fashion sewing, there's science enrichment, there's so many different computers, right, I'm getting them all.
No, these are great things to bring to our attention, Barbara, really, thank you.
So, no, I, and thank you for, for, you know, listening, because I think that they do a great job. And they have a schools out program that they're going to do hopefully in February and January, right, for the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday and President's Day Holiday. So all the areas that where parents mainly care, and it's actually on top of it being care, it's enrichment for them. So it's impressive. And early learning academy, you know, back in full swing, there was just, it was, the adult school, it's amazing how many things are covered by their group, and just a thank you for everything that they're doing and all their efforts and all the programs that are made possible, and I thank you.
And again, thank you for always bringing these things to our attention, greatly appreciated. No, greatly appreciated. I think we had Jeff, Heather, LeWu, and then Susanna, Jeff, Heather, LeWu, Susanna.
Okay, yeah, recently, I had the opportunity to tour Churchill. It's been a long time since I've been back into the entire school. I've only really seen the new side. And I was accompanied by Mr. Carangelo and Dr. Valeski, but I particularly want to point out the new principal and my impressions of Mr. Hannis. He hasn't been there that long, but I have to tell you, the level of respect that he gives to his teachers and his staff. We walked that entire school, I did get my steps in that day, and it just amazed me that he knew everybody by name. He greets everybody by name, how many students he greets by name, the students' response and reaction to him. Mr. Hannis is running that school like a champion. I will tell you, we walked, I don't know, did you count? I think nine pieces of trash he picked up along the way. The source of pride, it just beams from him, and it shows. That school, I did tour it about a year ago, or two years ago, what was it now, and, two years ago, right?
Two years ago.
Yeah, that darn COVID. Yeah, it was two years ago, and I will tell you, the atmosphere and the energy was completely different. So, great hire, great choice, great principal, and really, a great school. So I wanted to appreciate him and his efforts along with you.
Thank you, Jeff. That was really very well said. Thank you so much. Heather, LeWu, Heather, LeWu, Susanna, LeWu, Heather, Susanna.
So on November 11th, we had a curricular committee again. So this time, again, we had very big crowd, we have 39 attendance. You know, the essential idea to allow more teachers getting involved is, we want to hear more from people who is teaching our student. We want to know what our first, the front, people at the frontline, what they are thinking, because they have the best knowledge, they have most interaction with our students. So I really appreciate all those attendees. After a long day, spent two hours, we took together, talk about our classes. There are several new classes were proposed, as every single one of them was so excited. For example, there will be one in, proposed for high school, science fiction in the movies. So after I heard the proposal, my question is, can I take that class? Yeah, it's very, very exciting, and I believe students will like it, because this will expose our students to new technology, because technology will be play very critical functions in their life. So I believe this student will welcome this class, and all other classes are very, very great. So I enjoyed the meeting, and I want to thank, I like the idea, again, to have more teachers getting involved for the curricular committee. So last time, previous meeting, we spent more than one hour about math program. At that time, we have more than 40 teachers, more than 40 attendees, I believe, more than 35 of them are teachers. So we have a lot of good ideas, a lot of good questions, and apparently, this committee didn't ask many questions, as you guys just asked, but it's still good practice to have more teachers get into this committee, so I like this idea.
LeWu, you've done an excellent job as chairman of this committee, really have.
So my second report is, I want to thank Dr. Bulley and Principal Hannis and Dr. Sarah, the chairperson of mathematics. I had the pleasure, the privilege, to observe three math class last week in Hampshire Junior High School. So I want to tell you that our students are very happy, they are excited, they're involved. You know, I spoke to few students in different class, and I talked to the teachers. Students are learning, and that kind of setups, and I will share with the entire board with details about the math program and what I learned from my observations. But I'm proud of our students, and I'm proud of our teachers, and I'm proud of Dr. Bulley and Anthony, your team. You guys are doing a very good job, and I'm planning to observe high school math class very soon, because that is the way I can, to know more, more about our programs, about our teachers, about our students, that will help me to make right decisions. Thank you again.
I come with the, I'm sorry, I come with the abbreviated version. Student Services Committee met on Tuesday, and I will have the full minutes for the next meeting to talk about, but what I did want to say, I was taking notes rapidly, it turned into about two pages of notes while trying to talk, listen, and just write down, because the abundance of what we are offering to students was overwhelming, and I wanted to be able to think about it after the meeting. But we had a description, so programs from special education, the behavioral, the BCBA, people were there. We had guidance there talking about what guidance has to offer, what's happening with the homeroom push-ins, what's happening with counseling services, the small groups that are developing. The array of services was just phenomenal, sources of strength. We had parent groups there to talk, or parent representatives to talk. We even talked about the success of the fall athletes, and Mr. Malta was there. But what I was most impressed about, that I did want to mention today, and I actually would like to get a copy of the slide presentation for the whole board, because the resources and the links there were something that, as a parent, I found amazing, and I think we should all get to see. But the part that was most impressive was the constant reference to needs assessment, needs assessment, needs assessment, and that what we're doing to support students and families is not static. We seem to be constantly looking for what will best serve our students by asking, rather than just projecting, we think this is what they need, and let's move forward with it for the whole year. And that was what was most impressive. I mean, the program, there's a group for high school students dealing with stress through art, which the students, I believe, are the ones who asked for. It's just, there's an array of services, but I am so impressed by the way things evolve. So, thank you. I'll have more formal things, but it was really an amazing meeting.
Heather, this is your first committee that you've chaired since you joined the Board, and you're just doing a great job.
Oh, thank you.
So, just wanted you to know that. Were there any other?
Just one last acknowledgement, I think something we missed. We had all of the athletes and the athletic accomplishments, and I want to stop and acknowledge the coaches. We talk about transitioning back into school. We transitioned back into school with a more than one handful group of students that were energized and led by these coaches, and I know of one instance where even the cross-country coach, after the last meet, after the last run, kept the practices going, just to make sure the kids were in shape for track season, after the season was over. Who does that? I don't think you told them to do it. No, no. So the commitment of these coaches and the incredible job they did to get these kids back on the field, lack of a better cliche. So hats off to the coaches, the trainers, and everybody else who's involved with these kids. It's really just amazing. They didn't miss a beat, and I acknowledge them, and I think they should be acknowledged highly.
I'm sorry? Sure.
Whenever it's done.
No, we save the oldest for last.
Thanks, Susanna.
Yeah, just, just real quick, couple of things. I just wanted to remind everybody Harvest Fest is coming up this Saturday. It was rained out last Saturday, so thankfully, because I was out of town, so I thought I was going to miss it. So it got rained out, and I'll be able to attend this Saturday. The Human Relations Council will have a setup there, and so if you go there in the afternoon, come look for me. And so that's 12 to 7 in the historic district. So those of you that didn't know there was a historic district, there is one. And it's bringing back a festival, I guess, that used to take place in town, and the East Brunswick Arts Coalition is, you know, chairing that effort. So encourage folks to come out, be a little chilly, but should be a great event. And then the other thing I just wanted to comment on was to thank Mrs. Reese for her report on community programs, because I'm always so impressed when I hear about what they do, and I think back to when I was a parent and how challenging it was to find good programs and innovative programs for the kids. I was taking my kids to, I've taken my kids to Brookdale Community College, Middlesex County College in the summers to get these programs that weren't available in town. Now they're in town. And that is such a convenience and great service to our families, so. I just want to echo Barbara's thanks to the communities program team for bringing all these innovative programs to us.
And Dr. Valeski, before you, I just actually wanted to pay you a compliment. We, you brought up an interesting point before about the challenges of doing a pilot program this year, and it just reminds us again of the challenges everyone has faced. And we, we've talked, you can't say it enough about the incredible work our staff has done, our support staff, our administrators, but I think it bears to be repeated. You and your central office team have, above and beyond doesn't even begin to say it. I mean, I personally have talked to you at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning.
Sometimes, yes.
Sometimes, yes.
Yes.
On a weekend, on a holiday, on your birthday. It's just, it doesn't matter.
Why isn't always coming back to my birthday?
Oh, actually, I wasn't, sorry. That was a, but speaking of your birthday, just kudos to all of you. The dedication that you show, you all show, and the central office team and the audience is amazing. And again, coupled with what the commitment, the absolute commitment we have from our staff, it's just a win-win for our kids, and it's so important. So, Dr. Valeski.
Very quickly, you must have read my mind, because I just simply wanted to say, touching on Mr. Winston's comments about Mr. Hannis, I'm so proud of the staff of East Brunswick Public Schools, the teachers, all the support staff, our custodians, bus drivers, security officers, administrators, all the central office team. They have, they have come together in ways that, that I had not forecasted, to be able to deal with situations we had not forecasted. And I'm going to be just candid for a second. Mr. Winston's and Mr. Carangelo's visit, and Mr. Hong was there too earlier and had another engagement, had to leave. But student behavior at Churchill has certainly been an issue this year. And in fact, as I was walking out with Mr. Carangelo and Mr. Winston, there was a student altercation that was occurring upstairs while we were walking out. I was getting a text on my phone as we walked out, and yet you would have never known that, because our school security officers, our administrators, were on it with such immediacy. But Mr. Hannis has had challenges at Churchill this year because of defiance, because of issues with the cooperation with parents and guardians, and it has been beyond any forecasted challenge we could ever think of. And Mr. Hannis tackled it head-on and took the student body and broke them down into four groups, and had them in the gymnasium, and had a heart-to-heart conversation with them, and I was there for that. Mr. Figaro, or Dr. Figaro was there, Dr. Bulley was there, and talked about respect, honor, integrity, and talked about, from a personal perspective, how he felt disrespected by the student behavior. And so I think that, you know, he took that opportunity to connect with students and resonate with students, and he knew he was talking to a very small percentage of the student body. But that's the kind of commitment we have among our administrators, to make that investment, to change the culture of a building, and it's like turning a ship. It's sometimes, it's going to look like it moves kind of slow, but you just have to keep pushing on it and pushing on it to make that change. So I just want to acknowledge the entire team, because I see every day what they're putting in and the energy they're putting into it, which went along to that, you know, we have to measure our capacity. So, so thank you very much to the Board for listening.
That was so well said. I think a round of applause for the entire district is in order. Feels good to celebrate. So, I believe we, where's that agenda? We do have a need to close session?
We do.
Okay. So, the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting. The Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows. Those items in tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Can I please have a motion to go into closed session? Moved by Heather, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, abstained, motion carries. We're in close. Thank you for joining us tonight.